It's seven o'clock. We will call to order the Victorville City Council meeting, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Rail Authority, the Victorville Airport Authority, the Water District, the Library District. If I've missed any of our agencies, they're open as well. All open simultaneously. The custom and habit of this council is we begin every meeting first with an invocation, followed by the posting of the colors and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation tonight will be given by our good friend Pastor James E. Markham from the Emmanuel Temple CME Church.
Let us bow. I will lift up my eyes unto the hills, from whence cometh my help. My help cometh from the Lord, who made the heavens and the earth. Dear Lord, we thank thee for this day. Your word says this is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Dear Lord, we are glad to be here tonight. We thank you for this opportunity to pray. Your blessings upon your and your favor to your distinguished mayor, Mayor Terry Caldwell, and our faithful and committed city council members. We thank you, Lord, for them. Please, oh Lord, give them your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding, your counsel, your might, your guidance, your help, your leadership. May they continue, Lord, to courageously lead us in the 21st century to new heights, to take us from good to great. We thank you, Lord, for their labor of love and all the creative things that they are doing for our city, our schools, our businesses, our economy, our institutions of higher learning, our churches, and especially our families and our friends. Dear Lord, we feel secure and safe in this city. We feel your love and your compassion and your anointing coming through their leadership. Dear Lord, we thank you for them. Lord, we bless you on this day. We are happy and joyous to be a part of this city. Please, oh Lord, bless everyone here tonight. May their needs and desires be met, but yet may they be willing to say, "Not my will, but God will be done." Lord, bless each family here tonight, especially the families of our city council members, with health, strength, long life, prosperity, godly success, and your angelic protection. And finally, oh Lord, we pray the prayer. The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you. The Lord be gracious to you. The Lord lift up his countenance upon you. The Lord give you peace. Keep and bless everyone. In Jesus' name we pray. We say amen.
Amen.
Amen. God bless you all.
Please remain standing.
By the United States of America and public for which it stands, one nation under God,
Thank you Pastor Markham. Thank you to the Boy Scout troop for posting the colors and leading us in the pledge. It brings a great dimension to these meetings, to have the word of God as a part of what we do and to have the young people of our community involved in governance and in affairs of this city. We always welcome and always appreciate having the Boy Scouts here and the Girl Scouts. That adds a special touch to these meetings. The first item on each agenda, the city council, the redevelopment agency, the airport authority, the rail authority, the water district, the library. Item one on each agenda is public comment. Public comment will be dealt with concurrently for all of the agencies that I just mentioned. Public comment is that opportunity for people in the audience to address the council on any issue that's within our area of responsibility or purview. Because under public comment, we have no idea what may be said or asked of us, there's really no ability for us to properly respond. So our general practice under public comment is that we do not respond from the dais to public comment. If you are going to address the council under public comment and/or later under the public hearings, we request that you fill out one of these white cards that are available in the foyer. That way, we will have the information that we need in order to properly communicate with you should what you share with us require us to get you information, or perhaps for us to get more information from you, or sometimes to notify you that we have scheduled an agenda item to specifically address and respond to whatever it is you share with us. So for us to have that ability to communicate properly with you, we ask that you fill out the white cards that are available. The public comment section is limited to three minutes per speaker, and we ask you to try and hang on to that three-minute concept, and that way we can afford everybody an opportunity to be heard. But before we go into the actual public comments, and I have a whole stack of them here, we're going to go through another very special presentation tonight, something that's become very important to this city, and it's the military banner presentations. And without going into a lot of the detail, you'll see banners on the wall. These banners represent the names of men and women who are serving this nation in Iraq and Afghanistan. These banners will hang in the city and on the flagpoles and on, I mean, on the lightpoles until each of these individuals returns, and then the banners will be given to them. And so tonight, we have a whole series of banners to present, and although Councilman Cabralis, who was the originator of this idea, usually makes the presentations as a veteran, tonight they will be given by Councilman Rothschild, who likewise is a veteran. So at this point, I will turn the meeting over to Councilman Rothschild for the military banner presentation.
Mayor Caldwell, I believe first we have a presentation of a flag that we'd like to present to the city, and maybe we can have all five council members down there, and then after we go through that.
Okay.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council for supporting the military banner program and also the residents of the city of Victorville, which did receive a flag that was flown at Camp Cedar II in Iraq during combat operations in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom on February the 14th, 2008 by the Navy Petroleum Detachment. And there's a letter here from Enrique Ramos, and his banner is up there tonight, and I'd like to read this. Hello from Camp Cedar, Iraq. It brings pleasure and honor to know that people like you still support our troops. Your efforts to comfort Victorville's military families, displaying your banners are felt among the community members and are highly appreciated. We hope you continue your efforts supporting our troops until they come home. We would like Councilman Cabralis and Mrs. Monica Peterson to have set the certificate of appreciation along with a flag flown in your behalf. I personally appreciate your support. Thank you, and God bless you. Enrique Ramos, Chief, United States Navy, Camp Cedar, Iraq. So I would like to present this to the city council, and maybe we can place it here in the foyer somewhere so people can see the response that we have from our military in supporting this military program.
Come on, please.
Very much, and I'd like to thank the city council once again and again. Monica Peterson was mentioned in the letter because she is our liaison with everyone, including the families and the people over at City. She's the one that I have contact with, so let's give her a hand because she does a lot of work on behalf of us.
Well, as we do whenever we have these opportunities to have these ceremonies, we go through our list of citizens that are actively serving in the military and again recognize them, and I'm going down this list in order here for a very particular reason. So when I get to our last presenter, you'll see why. The first person I'd like to come up would be the brother Jason of Lisa Marie Brinhurst, U.S. Army.
I'd just like to thank the city of Victorville for this amazing opportunity to honor my sister's service. This is only her third time in Iraq, so this is very special for all of us, and I'm accepting this in the absence of my mom, who is in Georgia taking care of her house. So I'd like to thank all of you once again.
And as many of you know, we put the banners up, and when they come back from tour, we take them down and present them to them. If they go back over, want the banner back up, back to us, because we'll put it back up, and when they have their last tour in activity, then we'll present it to them permanently. So there'll always be a banner up there whenever we have any of our citizens actively outbound. If Father Alex Spinelli of the, and I'm going to present both these together, Mario Spinelli, U.S. Army, and Ralph Spinelli Brothers, and Dad would come up here.
This is a great honor. My grandmother handled all this, and I was able to have communication with both my boys. One's actually back from Afghanistan for a little bit. He's in South Carolina, and I told him what was going on, and they're pretty excited. And little dear, having two boys over there, but my youngest, first day there, he was shot in the back, and I asked him how he was doing. He says, "I'm doing what I wanted to do," so I'm really proud. So thank you, everybody.
Next, the next presentation actually will be taking place on Friday. Eric Zuniga will be going over to Iraq, it's Iraq, on Saturday, so we're going to make a presentation on Friday. Couldn't make it today, this evening. The next one will be Martha, wife of Enrique Ramos, U.S. Navy.
I just want to say thank you for honoring our men and women in the military. Hopefully, he'll be home in a couple of weeks. Forward to him. Very proud of him. Thank you.
So are we. Thank you, my friend. And Melinda from Yanobi, I'm going to say that name wrong. Galavani. Galley? Galley? Please. Melinda. And pronounce your name, because I butchered it's last name so badly.
Honorable mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I prepared something, a little something here, because I was told to tell you guys about my husband. So I prepared a little something, and I wrote it because it made me nervous. Ever since my husband left for Iraq, I've been a nervous wreck. So I just want to share with you what he told me before he left for Iraq. He said, "I am leaving you and our son not because my job orders me to do so. I am leaving you because this is my chance to give back to the country who gave so much to us. This nation adopted us and allowed us to call it our home. The country gave us this opportunities, freedom, and pride. Please let me go. Give me your blessing and let me serve." And these words keep me going every day, and I'm sure when my husband's here, at the end of the day, he's going to return all the glory and honor to our Lord God, Jesus.
Next one is David, accepting for Lisa Ray, U.S. Navy.
Thank you. I'm honored to accept this for Lisa. This is her first tour in Iraq as a Navy Seaview, and hopefully she'll be back in about three months unless they extend her tour out, which they're talking about it. So hopefully she'll be back in September. So thank you.
Thank you, David. Going to get out of sequence just a little bit here and make a business presentation for the moment, and then I'm going to get right back to the regular ones here. I saved one presentation for the end on purpose. So as many of you may know, our banner program, it's about $250, $300 a banner, and we need business partners out there in the community and everything for us to be able to do this. And there's a lot of people that are donating, but one special entity that's been here for two generations now, Greg Norris. Greg, if you'd come up and take in behalf of Horizon Communities as a major sponsor for our banners program.
I prepared some remarks as well. My name is Greg Norris, and I'm the president of Horizon Communities. My family has been conducting business in the city of Victorville for over 27 years now. We've enjoyed this freedom because of the sacrifices made by our local citizens serving our country and their families, and we are honored to accept this plaque on behalf of all the citizens of Victorville who have selflessly served our country. We would like to thank Mayor Caldwell, Councilman Cabralis, and the rest of the city council for allowing us to participate in such a wonderful program, and God bless our troops and God bless America.
Our last presentation this evening is for Staff Sergeant Jared Beehe, and if you'd please come up here and join me for a moment. You can see Staff Sergeant was wounded in Iraq and shot a sniper bullet in the head during his second tour in Vietnam. I'm going back to my generation in Iraq, and he's up here, not only that, with his Purple Heart and everything else, an incredible sacrifice just to be there. It's double as terrible a sacrifice when you get shot at and injured as badly as he took fire this time around, and we're so grateful to you, and we are going to be very proud to put that banner up and also to present you with this.
Hi, hello. My name is Jared Beehe. I was the staff sergeant in the Army during my second tour of duty in Iraq when I was injured. I was stationed in the town of Beji, and I had volunteered to accompany an engineering company to guard a lieutenant colonel. Be careful what you volunteer for. We were on the roof of a police station when I took a sniper shot to the head. I realized later two things. One, I was at the wrong place at the wrong time, and two, my Superman tattoo did not make me faster than a speeding bullet that particular day. I did want to. I did what I did. I had to do so you can do what you do here. On May 25th, I celebrated my live day. That was the day I was injured and I didn't die. I am a walking miracle according to all my doctors. I went to Casa Colina Pomona to have the same. The miracle continues. It sure as hell does. I'm that miracle. I'm living proof. I would like to accept this banner on behalf of all those who served and continue to serve our country. Thank you, Councilman Rothschild, and the city of Victorville for this honor. Thank you all.
Thank you for, it feels good to be an American. Thank you. God bless you.
Could I just leave you with this poem? My son, I have a son who went to war. When he returned, he was no more, but in his stead, a broken man, hard to hear and understand. He had a smile I recognized, a fan of love that was inside. I watched him learn to breathe then talk, and my prayers were answered when he walked. I saw a spark that used to be return to eyes that gazed at me. His life has changed and so has mine from simple pleasures, simple times. I've seen his pain then watch it go as more and more the healing shows. He has a spirit that helps me soar and takes the sadness from my door. He has a long way yet to go and things to learn, people to know. As time goes on, I've come to learn to know this son who has returned. We're grateful each and every day for those who've helped along the way. Thank you very much.
Now, we're so blessed with these type of people, our citizens across this country. Every community in this land should be doing a ceremony every month in their city halls across this country. Jared, especially, thank you for you, sir, and the sacrifice you put in your family and for the rest of you.
After a presentation like that, it kind of puts the purpose of tonight's meeting in a different perspective, and you consider that those men and women are in harm's way so that we can participate in democracy and freedom. It's just simply amazing. We are now at the public comment section. That's item one. I'm going to go through the cards in the order that they were presented to me. Again, please keep your remarks as brief as you can. We have a three-minute limit. The first card is Al Katil. Al Katil?
It seems so important after that now, but...
Could you please pull the microphone down and speak into it? Thank you.
As you know, I live on the Fourth Green on the golf course. The other morning, I was working in my backyard, and I heard a dog whimpering, and I jumped over the fence, and there was this little Mexican chihuahua. Evidently, he got lost the night before. He had a leash on, and the leash, you know, got caught in one of the plants, and he kept going around in circles, and his face was lodged right up against the plant. Now, if he had been two feet over more, he would have got caught in one of these plants that you have all over the golf course that are very, very dangerous. Maybe you don't think so, but they are dangerous. This dog would have had his eyes shredded to pieces. He would have suffered all night. Now, the other day, a 40-foot tree fell across the golf course, right across, you know, where they go from the fourth hole to the fifth hole across the driveway. So I went and got my chainsaw, and I cut enough so the golfs could get through, and while I did, I forgot there was a plant there, and I got it right in the leg, and let me tell you, these things hurt, and they last four or five days. Now, if you think they can hurt you, I got a very good friend of mine, his name was Dar Robinson. He was one of the most famous stunt men in the motion picture business. They were doing a motion picture called Lethal Weapon. After they get through shooting for the day, Dar was a stunt coordinator, he sent the helicopter ambulance back, which was a big mistake, so they all start horsing around on their motorcycles. And, you know, Dar was up and then off like this, and, you know, it went down like this, and he slid off the motorcycle, went over the hill, fell on one of these plants. It killed him. These plants went right through him and out his back. That's how dangerous these plants are. You got them all over the golf course. The people that are playing golf are half-wasted on the weekends. I see them. I see them with cases of beer. I know you don't allow it, but what they do is they have people meet them at a crossroad, you know, like if you're going for the fourth hole to the fifth hole. They meet them there with their car, and they put a couple of cases of beer on them. I seen this happen the other day, Saturday, and there were five or six of them drinking right outside my wall. And there were five or six of them drinking right outside my wall. These things are very, very dangerous. I don't want to see any human being get hurt. If one of your golfers ever fell into this, it wouldn't be a minor injury. These things will tear you up. A little boy lost his eye one time, had to have plastic surgery all over his face because he fell on one. They belong way up in the middle of the desert where there's no people. I don't want to see any animals get hurt and I don't want to see no people get hurt. And I hope you guys will take this serious. I know I've talked to a lot of people and they think it's a joke. It's not a joke or it'll be a joke till someone gets their face tore up. I hope you take it serious. You can get rid of them real easy.
We do. Thank you, Mr. Cattio. Jim Kelly.
My name is Jim Kelly. I've been a resident in Victorville for about 16 years. I've seen a lot happen. I'd like to address the mayor and the city council. I thank you for allowing me to speak. As we all know, gas prices are out of control, okay? There's nothing we can do about it. Yes, there is. There are products out there that will provide better fuel efficiency for vehicles without any added gasoline costs, okay? These products run on water, okay? They produce what you call hydroxy, which is a hydrogen-oxygen mix of gas, okay? It's not added to the gas tank. It is a separate unit that goes in the vehicle. It produces a safe amount of hydrogen gas, which is then cut in the engine through the intake manifold. It burns clean and it is more efficient. And I think that the city could implement this in their own vehicles to cut your costs of fuel, okay? The statistics are that you could say you could gain 20 to 75 percent even more mileage on your vehicles. I presently have doubled the mileage on my vehicle. I've installed them on other vehicles and they're also claiming, I mean, 100 percent mileage difference, going from 15 to 30, you know? So I propose that the city would take a look at the, you know, at the information I gave you. You could check out my website or my website or other links to other websites. I do have them in my own vehicle. I would be more than happy at a later time with appointments with each member of the council or as a group to demonstrate how I can extract this combustible gas from just water. I would just ask that you would consider that and save the city of Victorville thousands of dollars in fuel costs, okay? It works on gas and diesel, propane and natural gas vehicles.
Our director of public works is in the audience and I'm sure he will follow up on this and we appreciate you sharing this information with the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Norm Miller.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Norman Miller and I have some items I wanted to present tonight, but there was an article in the Daily Press recently that sums up some of my thoughts. And if I can quote it, "Recently, the city of Victorville council voted to give away our fire department. My civics teachers taught me that elected officials were trustees of the public resources, not the owners. My dad taught me you don't give away anything you need. Do either of these seem like a problem to anyone else? It didn't to our council. The council apparently realized fire protection is needed, so they rented it back at a substantial higher cost. I know they presented figures that showed a planned increase in the fire department budget. Honestly, does anyone remember in the city's history a department receiving a 13 percent increase in its budget? Isn't that about the same amount the fire department requested to start the paramedic program just a few short months ago? The council couldn't find the money then, but now is here and available to give to others outside the city. Oh, wait, I know on July 1st, 2008, city services will be reduced. The council is cutting cities' employees' work hours and closing city hall every Friday. I'm concerned that this is an issue of responsibility. If our council chose to rent protection services, they are no longer responsible for the protection of the city. They merely direct citizens to the people who are responsible. The council has never taken responsibility for law enforcement. Now they are refusing to be responsible for fire, rescue and emergency services. It leaves citizens of Victorville with a question that must be answered. Just what exactly are the Victorville City Council members willing to be responsible for?" Also, I was told that one of the excuses for changing to the county system was of possible paramedic lawsuits. I'm just wondering how many cities, including the county, have lawsuits pending because of paramedics? I don't think there's very many. I heard that there could be a conflict of command between a fire captain and a paramedic and I understand that. Paramedics have to make decisions on humans, whereas a fire captain has to make a decision on property values and things like that. Well, the answer to that is make the fire captain a paramedic. Then he'll have command of everything. And it's just too bad to me that nothing got discussed about the transfer to the county and worked out after the last council meeting rather than just voting on it. You could have done that first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
My name is Dorothy Miller. Mayor and council members, I believe that one of the council members should not have voted on the county takeover of our fire department. To me, this is a conflict of interest, even if only morally, because he can gain political on this. If the cost figures were correct and it would have been less to go to the county, fine. But that is not the case. It will cost us a lot more to go to -- let's see, it cost us a lot more. All the facts were not there. And I heard that the county fire is going to ask for a $50 million increase per year over their current budget. It really interests how the county was all prepared the next week to sign up our firemen, then must have known in advance how this was going to go. They had all their people and our assistant manager and human resource person there, even a notary public. We didn't need to go to the county. The excuse of changes was given as needed, paramedics right away. Well, we're building a new fire station in the Golden Triangle and you could hire nine certified paramedics now and put them into our stations and then train our current firemen to be paramedics. That won't take no five years, as some claim. What about the airport? Is that part of the deal? It wasn't when we began. What is happening?
Ms. Miller, you're beyond your three minutes.
Beyond three minutes? Well, anyway, I still want to finish this out. There's not much left. The county will have to change our system to theirs. What doesn't it work out after time? What will it cost to revert back to the city? Check with Fontana. It didn't work out there, but it's only taxpayers' money. And don't forget, there's three of you up there that's up for reelection. Thank you.
Next card. Hope I pronounce it correctly. Ramiro Martinez-Lucia.
Hello, I'm Lucia Ramiro Martinez.
Could you pull the microphone down and speak into it? Thank you.
Okay. I'm here today to ask for some consideration on a bill I paid of $215. Later found out I paid someone else's bill. Now, if $220 are not paid in five days, a lien will be put on my property. I also have proof of the bill that I paid.
The folks who handled that are in the back of the audience and I'll make sure that your card gets to the appropriate person and somebody from the city will contact you on this tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next card, Larry Kempton.
Mayor Caldwell, council members. Rudy, you dropped the ball. Remember when this was going to take place? I said I'd like to be the first $100. I didn't hear anything about it. So would you have Carol Lee tonight give me an address or entity to mail that $100? And I'll be...
Money go to send you an invoice. It was you and John Becker.
You're really a sweetheart tonight. With a couple of Pearl Harbor survivors in the family, I always feel very, very responsible toward the military. Walt was on that B-17 flight. Can you imagine flying in there out of gas and no goddamn guns? Crazy. Anyway, you got $100. I just need to know who to make it out to tonight and I'll make it out tomorrow. Okay, the reason that I'm here, I'd like to find out if the city would work with me drafting a state law dealing with this illegal dumping. We seem to be pretty good around the area here, so they just take it to the county or they take it to Antelope Valley. They don't want to lose their trucks here. I want the bastards in prison. No ifs, ands or buts about it. You dump your dirty diapers in our desert, go to the slammer, just like that. And you can do it real simple. I think if you talk to your hazmat people, when somebody dumps oil out in the desert, it costs hundreds to clean out that mess because you got to take a tractor out there and dig up the dirt and refine it. And I'd like to see this law deal with dollar value. Whatever it costs statewide for bad check, $200 or something like that, make that the level. Cost to clean up that mess, a felony. And believe me, losing their truck isn't going to make a damn bit of difference. They can lose their truck, pay no fine and walk away this way here. They're not going to come back and do it again because they're not going to have a gun. They lose their gun rights, whole bunch of things. So I'd like to find out if you'd do that.
Well, I can't commit the city to that kind of a project at this point. I will tell you that, and you know from previous discussions, that we are very, very concerned about the illegal dumping, not just in the city, but throughout the desert. I certainly will make it a point to contact Senator Runner and Assemblywoman Runner and talk about the possibility of getting some legislation drafted that we need to sponsor and those two folks have been very responsive to the needs of the desert and specifically Victorville. So it's a good idea and I'll make sure that we get some information to the runners and see where they think they can help us.
I left a message for Anthony tonight stating that I was going to address you on this and he hasn't called me back and said no, so I guess we'll wait and see on Anthony, but I'd like to have him...
We'll go to the ambassador at 8 o'clock. It's the start of the poll watching. He'll be there.
Plan on being there, okay? Don't want to see any runoffs. I have to put up with one of those people in a group that I've been involved in. I missed one meeting. Can you imagine that? And Al Bogler snuck in there and that was a member of the Central Committee. Bob, did you vote for him?
No comment, huh? Thank you, Mr. Kempton. That's all of the cards that I have expressing an interest in addressing the council under public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who had intended to address the council under public comment but simply did not get the cards filled out and turned into the city clerk? If not, then I'm going to deviate from our normal protocol and skip over the five agencies that precede the city council meeting. I'm going to go directly to the city council meeting and go specifically to agenda item number 11, which deals with proposed resolution number 086, which if adopted by this council would give the city council support to legislation that has been authored by our congressman Buck McKeon. It's HR 5887, known as the Solidad Canyon Mining Act. I won't go into a lot of details because the council has been fully briefed and the council is unanimously in support of this project. But we have a very special guest with us tonight from the city of Santa Clarita, who also, for her sister city, has a vital interest in this piece of legislation. And so we welcome Lorraine Westy from Santa Clarita, who wishes to share some thoughts with the Victorville City Council. And welcome to our city and thank you for taking the time to come over here.
Well, good evening. We were here for your wonderful opening of your beautiful city council chambers and it truly is a work of art and we're very proud to be here again. I'd like to thank you this evening for the opportunity to address your council. My name is Lorraine West and I am a former mayor of the city of Santa Clarita and a current council member of the city. Last month, I was deeply honored to stand at a press conference in Santa Clarita where HR 5887, the Solidad Canyon Mine Act, was introduced to the public. Among the attendees at this press conference were the bill sponsor, Congressman Buck McKeon, my colleagues on the Santa Clarita City Council, and the regional president of Cmax USA, representatives of the city advisory committee, and Victorville Councilman Mike Rothschild. I was especially pleased to take part in the introduction of the Solidad Canyon Mine Act because of the broad group of distinguished guests that were on hand that morning. Senator George Runner, Assemblymember Sharon Runner, and Representative of Assemblymember Cameron Smythe, as well as our shared federal representative were there. Private business interests and residents were in attendance. I was especially impressed that a broad group of Southern California opinion leaders attended that morning's event to hail the introduction of this very important piece of legislation. The distinguished guests at the press conference reflect one of the most impressive aspects of HR 5887. It represents the cooperation and dedication of government, community groups, and the private sector in finding a creative solution to a complex problem. The Solidad Canyon Mine Act will end a nearly decade-long dispute between the city of Santa Clarita and Cmax. Our city was at odds with this mining company regarding a proposed sand and gravel mine located at its borders. Our community has historically been home to sand and gravel mining and we recognize its importance in our community. However, our serious concerns are with the size of the proposed mine and the air quality and traffic impacts with this new mine, which would have brought to our city of 178,000 an additional 250,000 who live in our surrounding communities. In February of 2007, we agreed to a truce with Cmax. The truce committed both our city and Cmax to creating a win-win solution to our dispute. The solution we created was even better than a win-win solution because of this historic solution also helps the city of Victorville's master planning efforts while simultaneously solving our issue. We deeply appreciate the partnership opportunity that HR 5887 brings to the cities of Victorville and Santa Clarita in helping each community advance its goals. The Solidad Canyon Mine Act will provide a mechanism for the U.S. Bureau of Land Management to cancel the Solidad Canyon mining contracts and preserve open space in Southern California for generations to come. It will fairly... It will fairly compensate C-Max for the company's investment in those canceled contracts by providing designated federal lands of equal value in areas near your city. Most importantly, this bill will assist you in realizing your community's economic development goals on an accelerated timeline. We are pleased that the bill is not trading one mine for another, but serves as a fair and creative way of enabling federal lands to pass into local, public, and private ownership on a much advanced time schedule rather than waiting for traditional multi-year BLM land disposal process to achieve the same outcome. I am extremely pleased that our cooperative efforts include a valuable benefit to Victorville's planning efforts in this solution to Santa Clarita's dispute with C-Max. I am here tonight to ask you formally to join with the city of Santa Clarita, Congressman Buck McKeon, your own council member, Mike Rothschild, in supporting H.R. 5887. As this bill navigates the legislative process in Washington, it's important that we demonstrate strong support for the legislation in our respective cities. A showing of support by the community, which directly affects, will help Congressman McKeon reach out to other members of Congress to win their votes for the bill. I again thank you for your time this evening, and I look forward to working with you in a collective effort to pass the Solid Ed Canyon Mine Act. With your help, we can prove that through cooperation, creative solutions can be found that benefit all involved. And again, council, we're very, very pleased for our city to be able to work with you to this joint resolution for both our interests. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for taking the time to come over. It's important to your community as well as ours, and I think when cities can come together and pursue joint goals, there's a much better chance of them being accomplished. And we've been asked by Congressman McKeon to go to Washington to lobby for this legislation, and we intend to do that unless the council has a change of heart tonight, which I'm doubtful will occur. But it is good legislation. Congressman McKeon has been a very, very good friend of the Victor Valley and the city of Victorville, as I know he has to Santa Clarita. So we look forward to working with you. It's going to be a battle, for sure, but it's a battle worth waging, and we'll be in it together with you.
Well, we're proud to join in that effort, and we thank you very much, and we're very impressed with the collective vision that your city has. And I think that in Southern California, it's a tribute to California in general that there are people that are visionary and looking forward to resolving issues and moving forward with great gusto in this century. So thank you very, very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you for being here. We will deal with Agenda Item 11, which is the Proposed Resolution 08, 086, which if adopted by the Victorville City Council would authorize the council to go forward in support of this legislation. Are there questions or comments from members of the council? If not, a motion would be in order.
We'll move the...
We've got a new voting machine tonight, so... Okay, we've got a motion and a second, and can we vote? Doesn't show on my screen.
Show on your screen, yeah. That's different.
But it is unanimous. And I'll ask City Manager John Roberts to contact Congressman McKeon's office in the morning to advise him of this action, and we will get you a certified copy of the resolution as soon as the city clerk can get my signature on it. And we're off to the races. We will now go back to the normal order, which is the Library Board of Trustees, and that is Councilman Hunter's area. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item two is revisions. I don't believe there's any revisions to the agenda.
There are no revisions.
Thank you. Then we move on to item number three, which is a request to renew the Automation Service Agreement between Victorville City Library and the San Bernardino County Library System. It's just a renewal for another year. No questions? Entertained a motion?
Been moved and seconded.
Seconded.
May we vote?
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, there is a presentation. There is a presentation.
We do. That's not on my agenda here. That's not on my agenda here. Mr. Gargan?
Mayor, council members, it's my great pleasure to take the time to introduce to you the new librarian of the Victorville Library, Karen Everett. She's been here now, she's going on her fourth month, but been very busy, but this is the first opportunity I've had to get her down here to introduce her to you. Just a little quick fact, in the month of May, new library in Apple Valley and a new library in Hesperia, our circulation over half the month was greater than Apple Valley's, and a third of the month was greater than Hesperia's. And we're doing that out of our little 9,000-square-foot building down there. So it shows what a great job that Karen is doing, and we look for bigger and better things.
Can you imagine what we'll do with a 40,000-square-foot library?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anyway, she has come down with laryngitis over the last day and a half, so if you need her to speak, she's going to have to get real close to the microphone, but...
Well, we won't make her go through that ordeal. Welcome to the city family. It's an exciting time in this city. There are a lot of things happening, a lot of great opportunities and challenges, and you're going to be a part of something very dynamic. I suspect the reason John Gargan didn't bring you around for four months is that he wanted to make sure you got cemented into the process and didn't come to one of these meetings and get scared away. But we're glad you joined us and welcome.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That concludes the Library Trustees' agenda. We now go to the Rail Authority, and unless there are revisions to the agenda or urgency items to be added, there is nothing left on the Rail Authority.
No revisions.
No revisions, no add-ons, and the Rail Authority is completed. We will now go to the Airport Authority. And again, unless there are revisions or urgency items to be added, the Airport Authority agenda would be deemed completed.
No revisions.
No revisions. We'll now go to the Redevelopment Agency Agenda. Item three is a written communication seeking authorization to execute a real estate purchase and sale agreement for real property located at 7th and D Street, approve an additional appropriation from Series O7 Housing, set aside bonds in the amount of $510,000 for the purchase, and designate the Assistant Executive Director of the agency as the authorized signer for the transaction documents with BNSF Railway. Questions or comments from members of the Redevelopment Agency?
Move the item.
Moved and seconded. May we vote? Unanimous. We do have closed-session items, four, five, and six. Those items will be dealt with at the end of all of the other agenda items when we go into closed session for multiple reasons. So even though we've completed the regular part of the Redevelopment Agency Agenda, we won't close this agenda until after the conclusion of the closed session. We will now go to the Water District Agenda. Item three is a consent calendar. There a motion?
It's moved.
Moved and seconded. May we vote? Unanimous, and that concludes the Water District Agenda. We'll now go to the Sanitary District Agenda. Item three is a request to forgive a loan made in 1993 to the General Fund to facilitate the dissolution of the Special District into the General Fund. Questions or comments from members of the council sitting in their capacity as the governing authority for the Sanitary District? Questions or comments? A motion would be in order?
It's moved.
Been moved and seconded. May we vote? Unanimous. That concludes the Sanitary District Agenda. We will now go to the city of Victorville Agenda, and we will go to Item Number Two, which is revisions. The only revision will be the removal of Agenda Item Number 16 because it is a duplicate of Agenda Item Number 11. I believe that's the only changes to the agenda.
The only change.
Then we will go to the Public Hearings. Item three is a public hearing to take arguments for or against Proposed Resolutions 08, 070 and 08, 071, which deal with the acceptance of the Engineers' Report and the formation of a Landscape Maintenance District for track number... Where did it go? 17486. I'm going to combine the public hearing for Agenda Item Number Four, which deals with Proposed Resolutions 08, 072 and 08, 073, which again is the Engineers' Report and the formation of a Drainage Facility Assessment District, again for the same track, track number 17486. Are there questions or comments from members of the council as to any portion of Agenda Items Number Three or Four? That's got to go to public hearing. We have to open the public hearing. We'll invite testimony from anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on Agenda Items Three or Four pertaining to track number 17486, which would basically form both a Landscape Maintenance District and a Drainage Facility Assessment District. Anyone who wishes to be heard? Hearing, no. Public testimony? I will close the public hearing on Agenda Items Three and Four. We will have to have the title of those resolutions read by the city clerk.
A requirement for resolutions to be read, Mayor, just for ordinances?
Then I will call for one motion for Items Three and Four. Moved and seconded. May we vote? It is unanimous. We will then go to Agenda Item Five, which is a public hearing to take testimony for or against regarding the approval of findings contained in the initial study and a request to adopt a notice of negative declaration with a de minimis finding for the high-pressure natural gas line at Southern California Logistics Airport. Questions or comments from members of the council? Not? Then I will open the public hearing. Invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on the approval of the findings as set forth in the agenda for the high-pressure natural gas line. Hearing no public testimony, I'll close the public hearing. This does not have either a resolution or an ordinance number, so we're just adopting it, I take it, as the findings. Is there a motion?
It's moved.
Moved and seconded. May we vote? That is unanimous. Agenda Item Number Six is Proposed Resolution 08, 078, which if adopted would establish assessments for unpaid rubbish collection, sewer use fees, storm drain fees, hazardous waste fees, and Assembly Bill 939 recycling fees. Questions or comments from members of the council? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on Proposed Resolution 08, 078. Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing and invite a motion.
It's moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. May we vote? That is unanimous. Item Seven is a Proposed Resolution 08, 084, which if adopted would amend the fee structure for the Green Tree and West Wind Golf Courses and would simultaneously rescind former Resolution Number 9976. Questions or comments from members of the council before I open the public hearing? Hearing done, I open the public hearing on Proposed Resolution 08, 084. Invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against, pro or con, on Proposed Resolution 08, 084, which would increase the golf fees at Green Tree and West Winds. Hearing no public testimony, I'll close the public hearing. I invite a motion on Proposed Resolution 08, 084.
With approval.
Been seconded. May we vote? That is unanimous. Item Eight is the Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar has been predetermined to be routine and non-controversial. All items listed A through Q will be adopted with one motion unless there is a request from a member of the council to remove a consent calendar item. Not? A motion would be in order?
It's moved.
Been moved?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. That is unanimous. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is a request to appropriate an additional $85,000 and increase the service provider agreement for high-strength waste treatment feasibility analysis with CH2M Hill in an amount not to exceed $225,000. Questions or comments from members of the council? Motion would be in order? That is unanimous. Item Ten, Proposed Resolution 08, 083, which if adopted would set the time and place for a public hearing on the sewer user fee increase in an amount of $1.99 per equivalent dwelling unit per month and directing staff to proceed with the special notice proceedings as required by law.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on May 23rd, sitting as an alternate board member at VVWA, I attended a meeting where there was a presentation of a study of VVWA's proposed sewer rates on a go-forward basis. The amount before you today of $1.99 was adopted a little over a year ago by VVWA. They increased their sewer fees 25% one year ago on July 1st, and at that time approved an additional 20% increase to take effect this July 1st, which is the $1.99. However, based upon the information that I have seen, I think there will be significant additional sewer rate increases over and above the $1.99. So I think that it is appropriate, so that there is no lag in the collection of our fees, to go ahead and set the time and the place. However, I would not set at this time the amount of the increase at $1.99, as that is a pass-through rate that we simply pass on from VVWA, and I suspect that the amount is going to be significantly higher.
Well, Mr. Roberts, let me ask you this question. I'm assuming that the $1.99 calculation, as it exists today, is based upon some type of study, some type of analysis, the NEXUS study issue, if you will, that justifies the $1.99?
That is correct. However, that NEXUS study was conducted over a year ago, and that NEXUS study is no longer valid. VVWA currently is under a cease and desist order from the state of California because they do not comply with nitrite discharge and are under orders to make upgrades to the plant. Upgrades to the plant cannot be charged to new users, but must be charged to existing users. So the amount that they adopted of 20% based upon a NEXUS study that is out of date, this number is woefully inadequate.
Well, what do we gain by delaying the implementation of the $1.99?
We gain nothing. However, you are going to... VVWA, they raise their rates without much knowledge of the public, and the public doesn't necessarily understand that this is a pass-through rate to the city of Victorville. It's the city of Victorville and the other member entities of VVWA then that go to their citizens and charge this increased rate. And so you don't gain anything by delaying. However, I think it's important to realize that you are going to be going to your constituents probably now and then very shortly again with another increased rate passed through through to VVWA. It's not normally the way this city conducts business, but it's... We're beholden to our contracts to VVWA.
Well, my concern is that if we don't adopt it, there will be a lag in time before we get to this second issue. And I'm not so sure I agree with your comment. I'm not sure you meant to say what you said. You made it sound like it was a fait accompli, that we will in fact adopt whatever it is VVWA comes up with, and I'm not so sure that's the case. The NEXUS study's going to have to be pretty tight, and presume that the city of Victorville is just going to adopt it... I mean, it's one thing to talk about $1.99, but if it's going to be of an order of... I mean, it's one thing to talk about $1.99, but if it's going to be of an order of magnitude that I sense you're discussing, that's going to be heavily debated, and who's to say that this council's going to adopt it?
Well, a recommended course of action that I would make to the city council would be to send correspondents to VVWA, asking them not to implement the $1.99, which forces you to implement it this time, but to hold off until they've determined what the appropriate and actual rate should be, so that you're not going to your constituents on multiple rate increases over a short period of time.
When do you want to set this hearing?
Well, if... And again, their rate increase is automatically scheduled for July 1st, so in order to meet... Unless VVWA chooses to delay the implementation of that rate increase, you must go ahead with this as...
Second meeting in June?
Yes, sir.
Questions or comments?
Perhaps a way to accomplish what John is suggesting is to adopt the resolution with the deletion of Section Two, which are the findings, so that you then hold to the date, and we can hopefully then resolve the rate increase issue with VVWA. All that would do then is adopt a resolution that just sets a date for the consideration of the fee without any...
Well, the resolution will have to be reworded. It'll have to be reworded to set it for the second meeting in June. I don't know what that date is, June 17th?
There has to be a longer period of time for notice period. That's why right now it is scheduled for July 15th to accommodate the required notice periods.
So what date are we talking about?
I would still keep it for the July 15th, that I would just adopt the resolution with the deletion of Section Two, which are the findings, so that you make no impact on what the rates are.
So we're going to adopt a resolution that simply sets a date for a public hearing, and we'll get the NEXIS study information and deal with it at that time?
Correct.
With some dollar amounts. Questions or comments from members of the council? Is there a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 08-083 in the modified form as suggested by the city attorney?
They're moved.
They're seconded. Moved and seconded. May we vote? That is unanimous. Agenda Item 11, we've already taken care of. Agenda Item 12 is Proposed Resolution 08-087, which if adopted would approve a certain financial consulting agreement with the council, Newcom and the deals. City attorney advises me that if the council is satisfied with the concept as set forth in the letter memorandum of understanding, that the council could so indicate by its vote tonight, and D. Bortnowsky would fine-tune what the actual verbiage in the agreement would be. Questions or comments from members of the council? If not, a motion to approve Resolution 08-087, subject to Mr. D. Bortnowsky finalizing the verbiage for the agreement would be in order.
They're moved.
They're seconded. Moved and seconded. May we vote? That is unanimous. Agenda Item Number 13 deals with the proposed property acquisition for the La Mesa-Nesqually Interchange Project, specifically the property owned by Mr. Chicas, identified as APN 3093-121-01. We have Proposed Resolution Number 08-085, which if adopted would set in motion the city's ability to either further negotiate with the landowner or acquire through eminent domain this property for the Nesqually Interchange. This item was before, it's a month ago. It was continued at the specific request of the property owner because of the fact that he wanted to have further discussions with his attorney and have his attorney present tonight. Before I call on Mr. Chicas, is there any questions or comments from members of the council? Anything further from either Mr. Roberts or Mr. D. Bortnowsky?
You have a full staff report that provides all the information. This would be an opportunity for the property owner or their legal counsel to provide any comments or testimony regarding the proposed resolution or necessity.
Then we'd invite either Mr. Chicas or his legal representative to address the council. Chicas or Mr. Chicas's attorney or anyone else that would be representing Mr. Chicas on this issue. Being no testimony from anyone, then I would request motion on Proposed Resolution 08-085.
They're moved.
Been moved and seconded. May we vote? That is unanimous. Agenda Item 14 is a request for approval of the City Clerks Association Retention Guidelines, which would have the City of Victorville conform to the California Local Government Records Retention Guidelines. Questions or comments from members of the council?
With approval?
Moved and seconded. May we vote? That is unanimous. Item 15, request to appropriate an additional $200,000 and award a contract to Sully Miller Contracting for the low bid price of $295, $325 for the Bear Valley Road and Eagle Ranch Parkway Traffic Signal Installation and Street Improvement Project. Questions or comments?
I have to approve this.
I figured you would.
And Sean's back there going, "Yes."
And you wanted to be the maker of the motion?
You betcha.
Any opposition? I didn't think so. Unanimous. Item 16, we've dealt with. It's a duplicate of item 10. Item 17 is a request to deny claims against the city. Claim 08-06 by Christopher Spocatko and claim 08-07 by Rosemary Rainey and claim 08-08 by Cheryl Freeman and 08-09, Southern California Edison. I'll move that those claims be denied and in their entirety referred to staff for further handling. That is unanimous. Unless there is anything that I have missed, we're down to item 18, which is Presentation of Reports from Council Members. Mr. Cabralis? Thoman?
I just have one. I'd like to say this is really very nice, our new system, but there's only one little hitch, or glitch, or whatever. Mayor Collin's going to have a stiff neck every time there's a vote.
I already knew you.
He has to turn around and see how we voted. If we can fix it, that would be wonderful, if we can all see how we vote.
It'd be helpful.
No, understood.
The other thing is that if you have a switch and you double-click, you lose your vote. I don't know if you were aware of that, but that happened to me a couple times, where I clicked it and I clicked it real quick.
I did notice that, yeah.
So it went off and then it went off again? Okay.
I saw it, yeah.
Thank you.
Disappear and come back.
Got a nervous twitch. I'm tired.
It's fine.
Mr. Hunter? Rothschild? Roberts?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Well, I think we all ought to congratulate Mr. Roberts. He has... His oldest son just achieved a tremendous milestone in his young life, graduating from the Air Force Academy, and he should be very proud.
I am very proud of him. Thank you.
Well, tell him that we're very proud of him, too, having watched him grow up, a fine addition to military. That concludes the formal agenda. We will go now into closed session for all of the items that have been identified on the written agenda. It is not anticipated that there'll be any reportable action at the conclusion of the closed session, but I cannot guarantee that. You're welcome to stay and see if we come out with some reportable action. Don't want to sit here, we would understand that. We will not be offended if we come out and the chambers are absolutely vacant. Thank you all for coming, and talk to you soon. But we know where you live, so if you're leaving, I'm here when we come. We come out of closed session at 10:10. There is no reportable action out of any of the closed-session items discussed in all Sit on now?
Yeah, this system is real...
Come out of closed session at 10:10. There is no reportable action on any of the closed-session items that were discussed. Therefore, the city council meeting and all other agency meetings are adjourned.